Fourteenth, two thousand and nineteen Board of Selectmen's meeting. On the agenda this evening, we have a vote on the appointment of Vernon Jackson as DPW Director. We have interview for candidates for town administrative position, starting at five o'clock with Ronald Sanangelo. Six thirty, Kim Newman. After both of those, we will have a meet and greet for those people who are here. At eight o'clock, we have our final interview with Jeff Bridges, and that'll be via Skype, because right now, he's in Seward, Alaska. Okay, so Ted, could you please explain the process you went through on the selection?
Yes. Well, first of all, I just wanted to thank the head of Search Committee, as the board knows, that was picked, and the members on the committee, Greg, Gary Kelleher, Russell Chamberlain, Greg Morris, Charlie Blanchard, and myself, worked together. It's a great team. I think I have, I see four of the members here in the audience, and worked very hard in trying to find the right candidate for the town. We did advertisements, and we received a number of applicants, in which we did interview. We were going to interview five candidates, and one candidate pulled out at the last minute. With that, I am happy to say that we decided it was unanimous. After doing interviews, reviewing the experience of the individual, we all felt that Mr. Vernon Jackson, Jr. would be the best candidate for the DPW director position. Mr. Jackson's here. I'm going to come up, and I just, real quick, I just say that in his background experience, he's currently the DPW Director in West Boylston. In the past, he's worked thirteen years in private sector for H.J.H. Lynch in Sons and Millbury, when she was their project superintendent. Before that, he was their maintenance engineer for the Mass Turnpike, construction inspector, residential engineer for Mass Turnpike. And he was also chief water, wastewater operator for Mass Turnpike Authority. And prior to that, he was chief operator of water in sewer department for the town Sturbridge, which I assume he was working for Bellia?
Viola.
No, it was before.
It was for the town back then.
It was for the town. Okay, that's before Beaulieu was, I didn't know that. But Mr. Jackson has excellent experience, knows the community, he is from Sturbridge, and I think it'd be a wonderful, good choice for the board, and ask the board to affirm my decision.
Okay, now, do you have anything else you would like to add beside your past experience?
No.
Well, I mean, for the audience at home.
I'm looking very forward to working here. I've been here my whole life. My parents, my grandparents are both from Sturbridge, and no, I'm just looking forward to coming back to back to home. Back home.
Okay, any questions from the board?
I really don't have any.
Comments?
I just, I think it's great that we have a local guy who, because when we have bad weather, he can look out his window, he's right here, he's two minutes from the DPW like we have with Greg, and I'm just really happy. I think it's great.
Okay, did anyone on the Search Committee want to add anything? It's nice to know it was unanimous vote. You all smile. Maybe I'll call on you, Greg. Okay, is somebody willing to make a motion, then?
I'll make a motion to appoint Vernon Jackson, Jr. to the head of the Sturbridge DPW.
I think it's affirm, or?
Oh, affirm, I'm sorry.
Affirm. Second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Okay, four to nothing, congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Quick and painless? Okay, so we have quite a while, so we can take a recess. Somebody want to make a motion for recess?
Motion for recess till five o'clock.
Okay, is there?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
I just, I just want, and I just want to thank the, our computer person, our IT person, as well as the person in IT. They spent a couple of days working really hard, trying to set things up for the Skype, because we had this Skype interview. And if all else, if it all else fails, we do have a backup telephone for you to use, so hopefully, we won't have to go there, but you'll be able to use the Skype, which we ought to be able to broadcast here and at home, you know, so.
Oh, good.
It's not that easy, and they're doing their best, they put a lot of time into it, but hopefully, it'll come out well for that such, that part of the interview. That's all. Thank you.
Okay, all in favor of the motion for recess? Okay.
Who seconded it?
I did.
Welcome back to the continuation of our Board of Selectmen meeting. The rest of the agenda will entail interviewing the three candidates, and after the first two candidates, there will be a meet and greet with each one, and we will also try it on the Skype with the third candidate. Hopefully, it'll work out. So, the way we do this is the board will take turns asking questions of candidates. We will first have each candidate introduce themselves and give us their background and ideas, particularly for the people at home who do not have their resume or any comments about them. So, our first candidate is Ronald Sanangelo. Could you please?
Just some recommendations. Can I search the patients? Put camera up, please.
Thank you.
Okay, a little bit about you and your background and everything. This is basically for the audience listening at home.
Oh, that's great. Thank you very much. First, I want to thank you for inviting me here to be part of the candidates being interviewed. As you mostly, as all of you know, my name is Ron Sanangelo. I've been involved in local government for about twenty-five years in all different kinds of capacities. I know there's no residency requirement here in Sturbridge, but I'm almost a resident. I'm literally two miles outside of town in the town of Holland. Actually, when I moved to take the job as a Southbridge Town Manager, I almost bought a house on Goodrich Road, so I was very close to actually being a resident. My family and I live in, like I said, the next door town, and we're very involved in the town of Sturbridge, actually, already. My girlfriend is a substitute teacher at Burgess, and our child is a student in the middle school and involved in a lot of the sports here in town. So, I'm very familiar with a lot of sports programs, since I'm at most of the games here in town for either flag football or for basketball. So, very engaged already in the community and looking forward to an opportunity to serve this community. I know it very, very well. I think what you'll find about me, I know you have my resume, so you've seen my background, and I have a ton of experience in serving in local government. I've served as a town administrator of a town very much like this one, in terms of population and size, open meeting, five-member Board of Selectmen, nine-member Finance Committee. Basically, this is the exact same kind of structure of government that you have here in town. And I want to use all the experience I have, both in as a town administrator, as a town manager, do everything I can to help move your town forward. What is great about Sturbridge is that you're already in great condition. You know, having a double A bond rating, having a very solid fiscal budget, having a master plan, I think is awesome, had an opportunity to review your master plan, having good solid goals and objectives that you've already been working on, and I see the progress on those goals and objectives. It's really nice to see that. I have to say this, what I love most about the town is probably what you guys love most about the town. I love the historical nature of the Torres District, of Old Sturbridge Village, and of, you know, your key businesses and your Commons downtown, the Public House. And I love the fact that it's like a home. It's really a town where you get a sense of community. That's why we attend things like your Christmas tree lighting, that's why we come into your farmer's market on the Commons, because really, for all purposes, we're kind of attracted to what this town is. It's a place where you can really live in a very comfortable way, have a high quality life, it has great trails and recreational activities. So, that's a little bit about who I am. I'm here to do everything I can to help you keep moving on the goals and objectives that you stated, and looking forward to working with the Board of Selectmen to do just that.
Okay, thank you. Priscilla, we'll start with you.
Okay. Good evening. Mrs. Sanangelo, describe the approach that you would take to address the desires of members of this community, who desire to keep it like it is, as well as those in the community who want to see new ideas, innovations, and businesses which may change the nature of the community, but expand the tax base. How, what steps would you take to address all the needs effectively and in the best interest of the town?
So, understanding the culture of this community, I think it's extremely important for a lot of reasons to keep that core historical area in town, that you guys are calling your the Torres District. It's a beautiful part of the town, and that's what attracts a lot of benefits to this community in terms of even in terms of economic development. So, I think you have to keep the history alive of the town, you need to make sure the culture remains the same, because that's the reason why people moved here in the first place. That's what they love about this community. But that doesn't, that goal should not be different than actually moving the town forward with some economic development activities to increase the tax base. What's really crucial is that those economic development activities complement what you already have. You don't want things that are going to change the whole look of the town, but how can you increase, for instance, I know one of the things you're looking at is potentially a second major tourism type of event. You can do something that's comparable or complementary to Old Sturbridge Village without damaging the custom and heritage of the town. So, I think you really need to work with all groups, people that want to keep the town the same, and those people who want to make changes and be more modern or update, and find that compromise that does both, gives you that increased tax base, the increased activities that they want, but at the same time, protects the basic foundation of the town.
Chase?
The most important part about Sturbridge is our great residents. How would you strive to develop relationships, and would you have an open-door policy?
I have an open-door policy now, and will always have an open-door policy. I love to work with people. I think it's a very big, important part of the town. Customer service is the most important thing that a town government can provide to its citizens. They need to feel comfortable when they come into Town Hall, that the people care about them, and that they're willing to help them with whatever problem or need they have in the building. So, I meet with my department heads on a regular basis, every two weeks, and that's one of the major things that we talk about, is making sure that when someone comes in Town Hall, they're appreciated, that they're welcomed in a very friendly manner, and that we're transparent. If somebody needs information, we're willing to give it out. I looked at your website, for example, I think it's fantastic, your upgrade of the website is just terrific in terms of information. Everything is there. I believe I've spent a lot of time reading about, everything about the town in recent days. I also believe, you guys are using the blog that Leon's been working on, I also believe you can use Facebook, you just have to use it in a very careful way. It's more, it's better as an outgoing message and not a debate page. You don't want to get into debate with citizens, but anything you can do to be transparent to citizens is really good. Give you an example of what I do, I use public access, and I do a television show. Every couple of weeks or so, I do, it's called Celebrating Southbridge, and I meet with my department heads on the television show, and we talk about what we're doing in town to move the town forward. And the citizens can watch it on public access and get a real understanding of why we might be fixing a certain park or playground, or why the budget is as it is. So, you know, being transparent every way possible, I think, is really important, and working with them, citizens, to get them involved in town government. We really, as you know, it's tough getting people to serve on committees. I know your historical committee, from what I read, is not fully implemented, or at least there's not enough people on, I guess is the best way to say it. I love to work with citizens to get them engaged with the community, because we need all the talent that we can get to improve our services. So, you'll find it, you know, people of Southbridge love me, I go to all the community events, I say even here, I go to the tree lightings and different things, but in Southbridge, I go to all kinds of events, so people have the ability to approach me at all times, and everybody, selectmen, citizens, employees, all have an open door, whenever they come, they can meet with me, as long as I'm not in a meeting, they're welcome to come.
Thank you.
Hey, Mike?
Yeah. This question involves the subject of balancing goals and objectives. During two thousand and eighteen, the Board of Selectmen voted for Sturbridge to become a dementia-friendly community.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that? What kind of community?
A dementia-friendly.
Okay.
A green community, and a complete streets community. The town also started a farmer's market and held the first annual late-half marathon, in addition to the nine goals and objectives selected by the Board of Selectmen last January. How would you document, execute, measure, and account for that many town goals and objectives?
First of all, I'm what you call a project management professional, was certified as a project management professional. It's a very difficult certification you have to get, it's about six or seven months of training, that teaches you how to run various projects. And with that training, you basically document all the different projects you have moving forward, and it's important, as you know, with projects, to be on time, within budget, and within scope of the project, right? But the software that I use, it's called Microsoft Project, where you can literally put all the goals and objectives of each individual project, you add to it a timeline of when different goals and objectives should be met, along with the specific tasks that you need to meet that goal and objective. You also put resources, people, to each goal and objective. So, let's say we want to be a green community, and I know you've already approved to the board your stretch code. So, in Southbridge, we became a green community as well. But I would document, I would have the overall goal, becoming a green community. What do we have to do to reach that? We have to develop a plan that shows twenty percent reduction in energy use over a certain period of time to be approved, right? You also put in that plan the kind of things you were doing. For instance, I changed all the lighting in all, every building in town, and put in all the LED lighting in every building in town. We're able to do that, working with National Grid and their companies, to save frankly a lot of money over a long period of time. But you put that into your plan, and you designate all the different activities you have to do. So, you do that for each individual project, so you can keep track of it, because I may be working on one project, but that doesn't mean other projects should stop, because other resources, other people might be engaged in those projects, right? So, as long as I can plan them, to see them on paper, I can go back and forth and work between all the various projects to make that, make that work. Complete Streets, I know that's a completely, very important program for this town, because that'll add, you know, bike paths and walking ways and traffic-friendly conditions, and that's really important when you come to tourism, to make sure that that all works well together. I know that your, I want to say DPW, is already working with every future plan to be, take Complete Streets into, into, into that plan, to make sure that it's completed with that in it. And also, as you know, Complete Streets comes with funding from the state government, so you want to be able to use those resources as well. So, all of those projects can be done, you just really have to keep track of it, and then constantly reporting to the Board of Selectmen as to where you are in different stages of that. I see that you're already doing that with the master plan. In reviewing the master plan, I saw people commenting, and then Leon commenting where he was on the specific goal of the master plan. The same thing needs to be done with all goals and objectives in every category in town.
Thank you.
Is that, hopefully, that answers it pretty well?
Yeah.
Mary?
Hi. I've got a two-part question. We all make mistakes that we wish we could take back in our professional career, maybe in our personal life, too, but that's another question. Tell me about a time you wish you handled a situation differently with a colleague, that's part A, and part B, the flip of the coin. Share with us a few projects that you have overseen as the town manager, that you are particularly proud of in the last five years, other than the National Grid lighting that we, you've already shared with us.
Okay. So, in Hanson, which was a town very much like, like here, we had a town accountant who served the town one day a week. And he was very, very good, but I felt for the money we were paying that town accountant, that we could get somebody there for five days a week, and that that would improve the town's fiscal abilities, because you want to have a county accountant where you can reach out to him on a daily basis if you need him. And I thought that would be very important, to have that extra functionality of that town accountant. With that in mind, I worked with the Board of Selectmen, and we decided to hire a full-time account accountant for about the same salary. As a matter of fact, a matter of fact, the town accountant we had recommended a person come in, because he was a consultant, he wasn't a town employee, he was just a consultant for the town. He recommended somebody, and we ended up hiring that person, and it turned out to be, I don't want to say disastrous, but it took us quite some time to figure out that she had been an auditor, and an auditor looks at books that are already completed and makes evaluation on the accounting principles that have already been done. She had really great knowledge as an auditor, but she didn't know how to implement the actual accounting work. And it took us a few months to find out that was going on, because she could talk, she knew all the terms of accounting really, really well. So, when you asked her stuff, she could answer you really well, but behind the scenes, the books weren't getting done the way they should be. So, myself and other different department heads started realizing that she wasn't doing the work that we needed her to do, and I brought in the town auditors to audit our books and make sure, and find out exactly what she wasn't doing. Once we found that out, we ended up having her leave, she ended up departing, and we brought in actually the old town accountant back. He immediately brought the books back up to speed, and we were in good shape. But it's one of the few times where I hired a staff member where I was really unhappy, it just didn't work out as I had hoped it would. And it was disappointing, because, you know, I thought that would give us added value, and it turned out that it didn't. In terms of projects, I've worked on so many projects, but I'm going to give you a perfect example of one that involves a lot of collaboration, and I think collaboration is important, working with all different people, trying to bring them together to solve problems. You have a master plan, and you have an implementation team that actually worked on developing and implementing that master plan. In Southbridge, they developed, they had a consultant community, they developed a great master plan. And when I came in, the master plan was sitting on the shelf for two years, no implementation committee was ever created, no work to the master plan ever got accomplished, it just sat there. And I think they spent like fifty thousand dollars to build this master plan. And it was really good, it just didn't get implemented. What I did is I turned all my department heads into a master plan team, an implementation team, because my department heads had resources to do things. We've now accomplished, I'd say eighty-five percent of all the master plan goals, and we've done it by working as a group. So, my DPW, my PLEZ, my FIRE, everybody are working in, sort of sometimes in mini-teams, depending upon what the goals and objectives are, but we've collaborated among the department heads, and we've accomplished so much in that master plan over the last three years, it's been tremendous. So, I think that's one of the things I'm most proud of, taking from something that really wasn't moving, and creating and making it move, and collaborating with so many different people to be involved in that plan, that now it's very, very successful. So, I think, I can name tons of them, but I think that was one of ones that is recent, and frankly, it's exciting to see the accomplishments.
Can I ask a follow-up, Mary?
Sure.
Can you share, just because it is a bordering town, so we're all familiar with Southbridge, could you share a couple of examples of what was in that master plan that has now been implemented?
Absolutely. A couple of things, our park and recreation area, I was shocked at how bad our park and recreation, our parks were. I went and toured the parks, and frankly, I have to say, somewhat embarrassed that I became the manager of a town that would let their parks go to that kind of, I'd say, abuse, they were just worn. It really wasn't that anybody abused them, it's just that they weren't taken care of. So, one of the parts of the master plan was improving our parks and recreation, I've been able to put a lot more money into the parks, and proud to say that they're all reasonably nice now, I'd love them to be even better. I don't think I ever would be happy with a park, but, but made dramatic improvements in the recreational areas in town, so much so now, the next step is, we're going to be putting in a brand-new basketball court. The basketball court had cracks in it, and there was grass growing, and on the basketball, grass was growing in between the cracks. It's just, to me, I don't understand how you could let it get to that level. So, this spring, we're going to be replacing all the basketball courts, we replaced fencing, we've painted a lot of the playground equipment, so that's one example of it. Another example I did, I'm going to give you a part that we kind of accomplished and then didn't accomplish. One of the big parts of the master plan was to create access to the Quinnipiac River. And the town council voted to give me a hundred thousand dollars to, to do that, to purchase property and to build a park, with the condition that I get a grant from the state to DEP to, to match that funds or better than that funds. I got a grant for two hundred and sixty thousand dollars from the state, and then the town council decided not to move forward with the project, which was somewhat surprising, because the community loved the project, but they decided for a variety of reasons not to move forward with it. We made dramatic improvements in the relationships between the town and the school committee. When I came in, it was a very, I'd say hostile relationship, now we have a great relationship between the town and the town council. We've improved energy in a lot of different ways, we're a green community now, we weren't when I came in. We improved efficiency through all the town buildings by putting in LED lighting, we had no real master plan in place, they developed a six-year mash, I'm sorry, not master plan, capital improvement plan. So, now we have a capital improvement plan, I've had consultants give me, using community compact funds, using community compact funds to come in and look at all the town buildings and develop a ten-year, in this case, a ten-year plan for making capital improvements in all of those buildings. Right now, I've got the same consultant, we're just approving the contract now, coming into all the school buildings, basically saying when it needs a roof, once it needs an HVAC system, developing that ten-year plan to make sure we protect all the capital items that are in the town, both on the school side and the town side. So, those are a few of the examples, and there's a significant amount more.
Okay. Good evening again. My question pertains to what do you see the roles of an interaction between the town administrator and the Board of Selectmen? Basically, looking at your resume, you have three-plus years as town manager in Southbridge, however, that's town manager, council, and two years in Hanson, and I assume you had a Board of Selectmen there?
Exactly like here, five-member Board of Selectmen, nine-member Finance Committee, same exact type of government.
Okay, and then in Nogatuck, Connecticut, it says town manager slash mayor, so was that elected?
That was elected, yes.
Okay, so basically, according to this, you've worked with a Board of Selectmen for two years. So, what do you see the interaction and role of town administrator and Board of Selectmen?
The Board of Selectmen has the executive power in a town like this, just as it did in Hanson. You know, my goal is to, to serve the will of the board, to meet the goals and objectives that are established by the board, and to regularly report to you on how we are going about meeting the goals and objectives that you have established. So, a really important part of that process is keeping you informed and discussing, and like I say, a lot of your goals and objectives seem to be already established, and obviously, there's always more that come up, but to working with you to implement and to establish and to complete those goals and objectives in the way you want them to be performed. So, it's my job to run the day-to-day activities of the town, working with all the department heads and staff, and making sure that our goals are the same as yours, and we're moving forward in a very positive direction. So, the biggest thing, I think, in our roles is communicating on a regular basis, having that open-door policy with different selectmen. I had that established very well in Hanson. Every selectman, quite frankly, has different needs. Some work full-time during the day, they can't be as available as they like, so I did a lot of, you know, a lot of phone conversation with them, email conversation, others would pop in my office on a regular basis and talk. So, you know, my job is to meet the needs of each individual person, to make sure that they have that relationship, that I understand how they feel about different issues, and that I'm moving forward in a, in a way that the board as a whole wants to move in. And also, individual, selectmen have their own individual things, some might be interested in economic development, some might be interested in conservation, so making sure that I understand all the issues of each member, and how we can work together to achieve all those goals as a team. I think it's really important to have that relationship, and I think my communication skills and the history, my history has proven that I'm very good at working with members to get things done that they want to get done.
Okay, thank you. Priscilla?
What are the three top challenges facing municipal officials today? What actions would you take to ensure that Sturbridge is effectively prepared to face these challenges over the next five years?
So, there's a variety of things that, first, let's talk about the financial side, right? So, Sturbridge is a conservative town, and I'm a fiscal conservative. You want to make sure that you're using your money wisely, and that you're getting the most benefit from every dollar you spend, so I think that, that's very, very critical. To be conservative, that way you make sure you keep your bond rating, you know, in an A double plus rating, double A plus rating, I think is really, really critical. The financial structure, one of the things you guys have been working on that's really important is, is making sure you fully fund your pension plan, which you guys are on the same schedule we were, to make sure that your pension plan is fully funded and to get rid of that liability. The same thing is true of your OPEB. Your OPEB, you guys are around seven hundred thousand dollars towards your, your OPEB trust, and you're moving in a very positive direction for dealing with the financial matters. One of the big issues that towns face, and I'm glad to see you guys are already working on that, is the issue of roads. It's extremely expensive to fix roads, and it's a challenge for towns, because the Chapter Ninety money doesn't go anywhere near close to the money you need to, to make sure your roads are in good condition. Even more important, so here, we have a lot of tourists come in, and you want to do things to, to make sure people are comfortable in riding and have the Complete Streets, and be able to ride bicycles and pedestrians and all that type of thing. So, I think, you know, dealing with the road issues are really important, and here, obviously, we'll be working with DOT on Route Twenty, which is a crucial part of the future of the town, making sure that perhaps we can slow down traffic a little bit, making sure that signage is appropriate, making sure that they keep their road in condition. Some of the centerpieces in the middle of the roads need to be cleaned up and designed nicer to make the town more attractive. So, so I think roads is a long-term priority of the town. In this town, I think the really important feature is economic development that is complementary to the town. I think that's important, because you want to improve your tax base for your citizens, but you want to do so in a way that's friendly to your community and the environment here. So, I think that's really crucial. Another key issue, I think, is parks and recreation, making sure there's programs for the children in town, positive things they can do, making sure that our parks are in really great condition and that our children have a great place and a safe environment to utilize. Same thing goes with hiking trails. Kids are faced with difficult challenges these days. There's a lot of drugs out there and a lot of crazy stuff and we need to make sure the environment is such that we keep them off of all the nonsense and keep them away from that and create positive activities for them to do. So I think the challenges of education and the cost of education, I think, is another key issue. So there's a variety of things that I think are extremely important.
Madam Chairman, may I ask a follow-up to what he says?
Yes.
Thank you. You talked about that you have put in, that when you came, one of the things that you have done is you've improved parks. And you just said, if I understood correctly, that parks and recreation is important to keep kids off drugs and the like. In your improvement plan in Southbridge, how has that helped your drug problem?
Wow, that's an interesting story. The drug problem is a lot bigger than even recreational, but it does help. Anytime you can create positive activities for children is a good thing. We have a cops and kids program where our police officers are directly involved with the children, creating positive activities for children. I'll give you an example. Henry Street is in a poorer neighborhood.
I know where it is, yes.
And I put a lot of money into investing, into improving that park. That's where the basketball court is, I'm redoing, that's where the fencing is. I've cleaned up that park tremendously to make it look nicer. We've painted the Bay Path. The technical school, the high school has helped me maintain that park in a much better condition. It's really critical because the kids that need that park are very, very needy. I mean, it's a poor community and they don't have a lot of other things to do. So I think by creating those positive activities in that park, it goes towards, you know, keeping kids off of drugs. I can't say to you honestly, that I know that because kids are there, they've stopped doing drugs. I can't say that because, there's no way to measure that, right? On the drug scene though, I think it's really important. I've created a huge coalition, my town manager's task force on substance abuse. I've got Harrington Hospital involved, Spectrum Services, all different types, the police department, the fire department, a variety of community groups are engaged in that plan. I actually got the town council to give me twenty-five thousand dollars in funds from free cash. And for instance, next week, we're having Chris Heron, I'm not sure if you're familiar with Chris, but Chris is a former Boston Celtic who's going to be speaking to our middle schoolers about the issues of drugs. He spoke last year to our high school and that's been tremendous. We've sent out direct mail pieces to every parent in the school system, at the beginning of school year, explaining to them what they should look for in substance abuse issues and to do things, certain things, to, you know, talk to their kids on a regular basis, do things to keep them from getting involved in drugs. So we've sent out direct mail pieces to every parent in both the middle and the high school. We've created signage, signs from the schools that are positive enforcement kind of issues, good motivational type signs that create a positive environment. So, we've got a tremendous amount of different things that we're working on. We put in a billboard in town, an anti-drug message in town, a big billboard in town. So we focus really hard on that and I think it's, there's a lot of different aspects of that. Education is a big aspect of that, recreation is a big aspect of that, it's multifaceted. Creating good, strong families is important about that, getting engaged with families. So the drug problem is much bigger than any one issue, but you have to hit it a little from every possible area you can.
Okay, thank you.
Chase?
How important is economic development in a community to you? And can I have an example of something you have done to help out economic development in a town you have worked in?
I think economic development is extremely important. Again, it's different in each community as to how you want to deal with economic development. When I came into Southbridge, we didn't have any economic development group at all in terms of like, obviously, we have a chamber of commerce that you guys are involved in. So we were somewhat networked with Alex into the Chamber of Commerce, but we had no town organization at all. We created something called the Southbridge Business Partnership. It didn't exist when I came here. Me and Rosemary Scrivens, our economic development agency, met with all local businesses and we created that group out of, from nothing. And that group is now holding and supporting town events and we just did a festival on the green and they actually supported that and raised money for that. They meet on a regular basis to talk about different economic development activities. We do a little thing that frankly, was kind of funny, it took off like crazy, is we did a Southbridge Rocks Campaign. And everybody, other different businesses had painted rocks and they hid them all over town and you can't believe how many people were excited about finding these rocks and stuff. And it was a huge plus for the business community. I believe, and this is really important, when a business comes into town, they shouldn't have to go from department to department to department to get permits. So I have a team I put together of like the building inspector, the fire inspector, the police chief, the fire chief, health department, and we meet and we meet with that business one-on-one, you know, as a group. So they don't have to run around, you know, talking to five different departments, that we all work together to do that. My department heads are instructed that they're there not to stop businesses from coming to town, not to work against them and just say, this is what you have to do and send them on their way. We need to help them meet the requirements of the code. We need to tell them what the code is, tell them what they have to do, explain to them, we're there to help guide them, not to stop them, but they have to meet the requirements. You can't just ignore zoning regulations or building inspections, but they need to know what they are and try to make it as easy as possible for them to meet those requirements. At the end of the day though, I'm very strict that they have to meet the requirements, right? So I think that's really important. I worked with the, every manufacturer that we had in town, we brought them all together and we had a meeting and, I think we did six of them, with all the major manufacturers. And we invited the president and the leaders of every company in town, all the other manufacturers. They hosted a breakfast, like for instance, United Lens did it. They all came and we all met, we talked about business issues, but then they did a tour of like, United Lens. And when they did the tour, it was exciting to see where United Lens was saying, these are the raw materials we need. And then they said, well, we could sell you those raw materials. But they might have been buying the raw materials from across the state, right? All of a sudden, because we networked the manufacturers together, they were buying from each other. They were helping each other with manufacturing process. So they worked, they said, oh, this is how you do this? Well, we could do that too. And it really opened up a good network of communication for manufacturers. I'll say this, you know, a lot of people focus on new companies. Before you focus on new companies, you need to make sure your current retailers, your current manufacturers are happy. You need to make sure that you work with them because quite frankly, they're more likely to build your tax base in often cases than new people coming in. Because they want to expand, they want to grow, and you can often get more tax value and more benefit from working with your current companies than you can with new companies coming in. So I think economic development is extremely important, but it needs to fit your community. Really important here is that it fits into the community as it is, the historical nature, the small-town atmosphere, that it doesn't, you know, get involved in residential neighborhoods. It has to be appropriate for the type of community you have and what you need. And I think that is critical here. You don't want to change the atmosphere of the town by some kind of economic development project that just doesn't fit in.
Thank you.
Hey, Mike?
This is on the subject of complex major project experience. The Route 20 section of Main Street is a state highway. It's a US primary route and a major evacuation route. And has many issues, including congestion, lack of parking, utility conflicts, gaps in sidewalks, no bicycle accommodations, and a narrow right-of-way. Five years ago, the town's commercial tourist district plan called for a project that would cost well over twenty million dollars without addressing the congestion and right-of-way issues. The regional planning agency is currently working on a corridor profile for the segment of Route 20. Please describe your experience with complex major projects and how you might guide the town to initiate this project with MassDOT and develop it in sync with available funding sources.
Boy, that's really easy. Yeah, that's a, that's a very complex question and a lot of segments to it. So let me attempt to hit it from a variety of things, right? Obviously, CMRP is an extremely important planning tool here. I know you used them for the Route 15 corridor to look at it. So CMRPC can play a key role in helping us develop a plan for that. As you know, I think you use their technical assistance program for the Route 15 corridor. So, in terms of planning, I think they're a crucial asset to working with us. DOT, the same. You need to develop a great relationship between the town and state agencies. I've done that extremely well with a lot of state agencies. So I have the relation, I have good relationships with state agencies already. I would work very hard with DOT to look at the current plans in place, see what we can Congestion, you know, I've been looking at your master plan and some of the conversations have been about how to slow down traffic there, to change signage and make it more attractive coming out of town and how to slow down traffic. And there's a variety of ways that were suggested in doing that. And I know that anything you do in terms of Route 20, in terms of the infrastructure itself, is going to be expensive. It's just, but you can do it, you don't have to do everything at once either. You can do bite-sized pieces in a way that over time, you can actually get more accomplished. Sometimes it's hard when you have, you know, expensive issues, trying to tackle it all at once is too hard for taxpayers to swallow in terms of cost, right? So I would suggest to you that by using project management, you would take it in segments and look at key components of Route 20 and try to take one segment at a time and try to make improvements. You know, part of it, I was, I was looking at the, where 20 hits 131, the connection and all the centerpieces there, and it is kind of crazy and it doesn't look the way frankly, in my opinion, it should, particularly since it's a beautiful tourism town. That, to me, is a gateway kind of attraction there. Man, you'd really like to update and improve the look of that. You know, I've seen some towns where literally they use bushes and they form out the name of the town in a bush. They have some key kind of thing that attracts people and shows the beauty of the town as you come into town. So I think you really too need to focus on those entryways, those gateways into Sturbridge. So, coming in from Holland, that gateway, I think, is really crucial. Coming in from 131, I think, is really crucial. So there's a lot of key areas that I would focus on. I really believe that I am a relationship creator. I love working with state officials. That's one of the things I think where my state legislative experience for ten years helps me a lot. A lot of people will go directly to state reps and state senators to get things done. Truthfully, where the money is, is usually with the commissioners of the various different departments. So for instance, on the waterline in Charlton issue that we were dealing with, I dealt a lot with Marty Suber, and we were able to get a five-million-dollar grant to build a waterline from Southbridge to Charlton, and we were able to use Casella funds of five million dollars to do that line as well. So the town, the cost of the town of Southbridge was zero. So that, that ten million dollars of cost, it could have been on the backs of the taxpayers of Southbridge, essentially, we got off for just running the project. Our DPW is going to manage the project and build that waterline, but there was no cost to that. So, I think that there's resources you'd be surprised at, that you can, you can get from state government if you're willing to ask and if you develop a plan that makes sense to them. And again, the plan has to benefit them as well. This is a state road, right? So, what benefits them? How can you share in potentially costs that might be beneficial to them as well as you? How can you both win by creating some kind of project that both people participate in? If you can do a win-win instead of a win-lose with somebody, you're much more likely to succeed. So, project management is my, is my specialty. I mean, I'm a certified project manager, was, so recently, and I understand how to put those tasks into ways that we can achieve that. And I think my key thing is that look and see how we can do that in segments so we can afford it.
Mary, excuse me? Okay. If you were to get the position here, why and how will this job fulfill your career objectives in a way that your current position in Southbridge does not? I guess, bottom line is, is why is it time for you to move on and why Sturbridge?
I opened up with a clear statement. This is like home to me. When I came to Massachusetts, it was my goal to manage a small town. I like to see where you can make a difference in your community and I like the part where you're engaged in the community. I like to be involved in the, going to the little league games and going to the tree lighting and I like to, and I particularly love, this is going to sound strange, I love that little ice skating rink you have. The reason I love it is because I did the same thing in my hometown. You know, the satisfaction doesn't come from building a twenty-eight or thirty-two million-dollar budget. The satisfaction really comes from seeing the things that you do that makes the town nicer. Sturbridge is beautiful because of its atmosphere, because of what it offers to its citizens and the feeling people have by living here, the quality of life issues. That's really what I want to, to get back into. I want to get into those quality of life issues where I can see this as my home for the next ten years in terms of being a big part of the community and investing in the community and trying to make it better. I have a very significant reason to make Sturbridge better. Our child attends the school system here. It's just, you know, it, that's important to me that he gets a quality education and it's really nice. I mean, he's in Burgess and, I'm sorry, he's in a middle school and I'm attracted to the quality of the education system here. My girlfriend is a, is a substitute teacher in Burgess and she loves it. Alex, and just to be clear, Alex is not technically my son by legalities, he's my girlfriend's son from her previous marriage, but he's my son. I've been raising him since he's five years old. So, you know, this town to me is kind of, it's my future as well as your future. I have a real reason to be part of this town. Don't get me wrong, because I love Sturbridge or Southbridge. Southbridge, the people have been great to me. I love the people, I have the best set of staff. If I miss anything, it'll be my team of staff, the department heads and the people who work for me. They work as a team, they're great. I will miss that. I also, to be very honest, I won't miss the politics of Southbridge. It's a whole different game of politics that frankly, doesn't attract me at all. So, I'm looking forward to getting back to when I first came to Massachusetts for that small-town comfort feel and being engaged in ways that I can really get a lot of satisfaction in my career about what we accomplished and how you can see those, those improvements.
Thank you. Now, you said, you mentioned that you have an open-door policy, so I'm assuming, you know, knock-knock, come in.
There's no knock because the door is open, so but yeah.
But also, and you meet with department heads, you said, every other week?
Every two weeks, yeah.
Okay. Now, do you go out and about and, you know, go to, like, we have the center office building where there are offices other than here. We have the library, we have the senior center, police department, highway, fire department. Do you ever go out and meet with the employees and the department heads in their working area? It's communication with people who are there also. You go to the library, you go to the senior center, those are our customers. Do you have a policy as far as meeting with people, greeting them, even department heads? We have department heads across the street. If you don't have a project you're working on, do you ever think of just going over and saying, hi, how are you today?
So, in this case, I wouldn't call it a policy, I'd call it a practice. It's what I do. I regularly go to the senior center and talk to the people there. In our town, they have a Latino group of women who meet there on a regular basis. I've gone to them probably five or six times and just talked to them, just to say hi, to hear what their problems are and to just let them know I'm alive and I'm just interested in what they have to do. They also have numerous senior events there, because our community center, it's mostly our senior center, but it has also community events there. So I've met with our regular seniors on a pretty regular basis over there. Mike is our, Trembley's our veterans agent and senior center director, so Mike is a regular and we talk all the time about activities that are going on there. I'm very interested in the programmatic issues that are over there to make sure that the programs are what meets the needs of the people and I love to see the organization grow. I'm also a regular at the library. The library, Margaret is just, she's a wonderful person, so I meet with her on a regular basis, both for projects. You know, we have some projects over there, so I end up meeting with her on those things. But there, she's also part of my group. She was very big in what's called the Red Ribbon Campaign, which is an anti-drug campaign that we run. It's a national program. Margaret has been tremendous in working with me to make sure that there's anti-drug information library for those people who need it. So I'm very engaged with that. I walk over, my fire department happens to be right across the street from Town Hall, so I walk over there just to chat with the guys, to hear if there's any issues or not. So, yeah, I'm very engaged in various issues in all different departments in town. I, I meet with department heads every two weeks and we go, the way we do our department head meetings is, I will talk about things that are happening all throughout town and then each department head will tell me what's going on in their department, but they're telling the whole group what's going on in the department. So they share experiences and everybody, all the department heads knows what's happening in the whole town, not just their department. There's no silos in our town. We really work well together as a group and I'll find the police chief will start talking about something he's doing and all of a sudden, the fire department wants to help him and the DPW wants to help him. And I gotta say, I've been doing this for twenty-plus years and in terms of working together, this is the best team I've ever had. There's never, anybody ever says no to anything. It's phenomenal in terms of the relationships between the department heads. Often, I could pick up a phone and call a department head. I only, a lot of times, I just don't do that. I actually will walk downstairs or walk to the department to talk to them, not because I want to get the question answered from them, but I want to be able to say hello Not because I want to get the question answered from them, but I want to be able to say hello to the employees in your department and, and show that I'm around and available. So, it's really, you know, it's easy to pick up a phone and stay in my office all day and call people, but that's just not my nature. I like to get out and talk to people and communicate and to be able to hear their problems. My employees will tell you that they see me all the time. Sometimes maybe too much. But, but, but generally, it, it's just part of my nature. I'm, I'm very public and, and available to people. And even when citizens come in town hall, I'm often, we'll go down and greet them. Hello, how you doing? Welcome to town hall. It's just part of, I want, I guess I'm an example for the rest of my employees. I want my employees to understand that I'm not asking them to provide quality customer services, but I'm going to provide the same thing. So, part of that is to have them see me saying hello to customers. If a customer is trying to find a department, walking them to the department and showing them, this is the clerk's office, introducing them to the town clerk. I think that's, I think it's important that people know who your town administrator is and that they're generally just a good guy or a good person. I think that, that's important.
Okay. What about visiting businesses? We have a lot of businesses in town and oftentimes, we hear complaints from them. And there are evening meetings with different boards and committees that they could go to. But a lot of the business owners are in town. So, do you frequently visit the businesses?
Yeah, I do. You know, there's a couple of ways to do that, right? So, I do that. What, I actually created a public access show. It's called Showcasing Southbridge Businesses. So, I take a crew of film people, you know, camera people. And we go out and we meet with businesses in town. You can look it up on YouTube as, as Showcasing Southbridge. And there's probably fifteen of them or so. Where I go out and I met with like Sturbridge Hotel and Convention Center. And I bring the camera crew with me and we do an interview for twenty to twenty-five minutes with that business leader, talking about why people should come and do business at the hotel and convention center. It's free. My public access show, they, they create activity for my public access show. We don't talk about things like pricing, but it gives a free promotional campaign for the business in town. They love the fact that the town is actually helping them and it gives them an opportunity to talk to me as well. But then they can also, we upload it to YouTube, so they can use it to showcase their businesses to their customers as well. So, we've done it with very small businesses, restaurants. So, we did it with Fins and Tails. We've done it with the Metro Bistro. We've done it with the Hotel Convention Center. We did it with a jewelry store. We've done it with countless businesses in town. It's all free advertisement for them and it shows another way that they believe that the town is business-friendly. And it gives me a chance to talk to them about their business and why they came to Southbridge and, and how, how much we appreciate them and thank them and that we want local citizens to come to, to support local businesses.
Yeah.
There's at least fifteen on my YouTube. You gotta punch it, punch it up and you'll see a whole bunch of different ones.
But other than helping them and basically advertising for them, do you just, you know, drop into the local coffee store and see how things going this week, you know, have you had any problems?
I'm in, I'm in town all day long. So, I do that quite a bit. I stop into the local restaurants. I have breakfast in the local restaurants. Have lunch in local restaurants. I actually eat quite a bit at the, there's a Chinese place at the, at the edge of Sturbridge and Southbridge on one thirty, yeah, one thirty-one, Empire. I go there on a regular basis, actually with one of the business people in town. It's a developer who's trying to develop a restaurant in town. We meet there and have lunch. So, the answer is yes. I do my dry cleaning and my local dry cleaning. One of our local dry cleaners, that's where I go. I try to support the businesses in my community by going to those businesses. So, it is a regular place that I go. And truthfully, there's not a lot in Holland to go to. So, so, like I said, the two places I do on my businesses is in Southbridge and Sturbridge, because that's frankly where everything is, you know? So, I mean, I, before I even start here, I could tell you that I'm in McNux. I should have stock in that place because we shop there constantly, all the time. It's just a great place to go. So, they will routinely see me in there because I'm always there. The same thing is true of Teddy G's. I love going to Teddy G's and we have lunch there. It's my, one of my favorite places for lunch. I actually had an opportunity, because I wanted to see a job, I was talked a lot about the, the big hotel convention center. I'm blank on the front, the name of it in town. It's an older place.
The Host.
The Host. So, I took a, I took a ride to the Host, because I wanted to see. You know, I've been looking at how can we improve businesses in town. So, I took a ride up to the Host and took a walk through there. I've been in there a number of times for things, but I always kind of went in and out. And I really took some time and I looked through the other different, you know, through the facility all through downstairs and never realized how huge it was and the activities there. But what a great opportunity for even expanding conventions there. I talked to the, the man at the desk about that and he was telling me the different times. And the biggest issue, when, when Leon was here, me and Leon talked a lot about how you could take a regional approach to help Sturbridge in terms of economic development. Because the way Leon explained it to me, and I pretty understand that, that people come for a day, there's not enough activities to keep them here for a long period of time. And you want them to use the hotels. You want them to stay in the residence. But you need a little more activity to keep them here for a longer time and how we could do that. We actually talked about how we could maybe use the Southbridge Airport to, to create an activity. But, you know, the economic development here and the tourism business, we need to, it seems to me that the beneficial would, you don't have to recreate it. How could you make it last longer? How could you maybe do more winter events that might attract people here more in the winter? How do you expand the time, the key times that the Host would have? They told me, I want to say they told me, I want to say they said March or April, it starts and it runs through like July and August and then it kind of dies down. How do you maybe expand that time a little bit more to get people to stay more in town and to attract them for a longer period of time and extend that tourist season? So, so, it's, it's using places like the Host and the, the benefits, the Public House and, and the Village. How do you coordinate with them to, to improve the business climate for them and to expand their timeframe for their business? So, I think that can, in Sturbridge, I think that could be a big thing. Is, you know, not necessarily creating a new business, but trying to make the, the market better and work with regional towns. I have a great relationship with all the area managers. I, I meet with them every month. I know Ted and I know Leon and, and, you know, Charlton and Julian, Auburn. I have great relationships with them already. So, the question is, how do we work with them as well to create opportunities to keep people here and do business here? But at the same time, visit, make this the hub for outside activities, you know?
Okay. Thank you. Priscilla?
Okay. What are your personal core values and how have these influenced your work ethic and how you approach your responsibilities?
First of all, I like to work. I like making a difference. I think, you know, in all the years I've been in local government, and, and let me explain it to this way. After leaving state government in Connecticut, I tried to go into the private sector. And I was a project manager, certified, as I said, as a certified project manager. I was doing multimillion-dollar infrastructure plans for Cigna Insurance and John Hancock Insurance out of Boston. I was working for a consultant, but I was doing projects for them. And it got to the point where I was working from home and I was building these multimillion-dollar infrastructure projects, building servers and stuff for data centers. And it was interesting. I was connecting the business people to the IT people, because they speak different languages. And I was doing that relationship between them and building these projects. And I did all these projects that they loved, but I never saw them. I mean, I never saw the work that was done. I was on the phone talking to a network guy, a server guy, a data center guy. But I never saw the outcome of that work. And it drove me crazy, because what I appreciated is seeing the achievements, seeing the building, you know, the park being built or, you know, the, the ice skating rink on the green or seeing that is really what makes me tick. That accomplishment, that seeing progress. And that's a core value to me. I need to have that, that implementation, that actual solution to a particular problem. That's what gives me my, my satisfaction in my career. My core value is I'm honest to a fault. I mean, it's, it's, I just, I have no purpose in lying. I think it's just, it's not worth the time or effort and it just causes problems. So, I'm, I'm honest to a fault. Try to be a good father to my son and to sort of my adopted son, I guess you call him. You know, I, I guess I'd say to you that my values are the same as most people I know, that they're open and honest. They try to care about their community. I mean, I got involved, I served on the, the local Red Cross. I've been, I've had countless voluntary jobs. The, the reason I got involved in government in the first place was because of the drug problem. I, I saw, as a young man, I saw kids getting involved in drugs and I hated it, my friends. I couldn't stand to see it. So, my first job in, in, in private, uh, public sector was, I served on something called the Nordic Youth Services Advisory Board for eight years. Because I felt that we needed to create positive things for kids to do. So, that, that's how I got involved in government. And it's, once you kind of get involved in government, they, they just drag you into all kinds of things. It's, it's, you know, it's like the, your first father, they like what you're doing. He says, "Okay, want to help us with this, want to help us with that." And it just never ended. And I'm still today doing things for government and doing, you know, involved. I mean, nobody created, I created that substance abuse not because anybody asked me to. The task force was created because I thought it was the right thing to do and I wanted to help children. So, it wasn't a goal or objective of the town council or any of that stuff. I just think it's important to, to protect our children and to see some kind of positive future. Too many people are just dying. I mean, there's no other way to say it. People are just dying needless. And it's, it's horrible to say it.
Thank you. Jase?
What do you feel is Sturbridge's greatest strength and a weakness that we have?
I think your greatest strength is what I said earlier. It's the, it's the historical home feeling, that, that, that hometown culture of just being a place you'd want to live, a place you'd want to call your home. And you have a great school system. You know, Leon's has done a great job for you in, in making sure that your government was conservative and running well. You see community involvement in the town. I mean, it, it's, it's a place you want to live. I mean, I don't know how much more complimentary you can get than deciding where you want to make your home. That was why frankly, when we were looking at houses, we, we looked at Seven Goodrich Road and, and we wanted to buy a house here. Now, I couldn't sell my house in Hanson in time and the deal fell through, but it's where we wanted to live. So, you know, I think, I think that's the greatest asset. Obviously, if you want to look at items, I mean, tourism is, is tremendous value for you in terms of economic development, in terms of bringing in tax dollars, in terms of creating a, a positive economic development situation, your greatest assets are your location. You've got a great location with one thirty-one and twenty and ninety and eighty-four. Your location is fantastic. You're also central between Hartford and, and Boston, which is a great place to be. So, you guys have a lot of assets that you can build from. You just gotta, you know, you have to build a certain way to, like I said, to protect the environment of the town. So, your assets are, are phenomenal. You even have open land that you can do some development with. I, I took a look at your industrial park and I'm wondering if there's any more land up there to increase that industrial park and get some more traffic up there? Because it's great. It's right off of, of ninety or eighty-four there and it's a great location and it's not near residential communities. So, so, there's benefits of that. I, I looked at the manufacturing, I, I mean, I drive by it every day, in the corner of Holland Road and twenty. And I, I wonder what that could be. You know, that could be a beautiful recreational kind of activity, a tourist activity. It could be a restaurant, it could be office. I mean, so many opportunities for that space. And I know you, you had, I think, Rite Aid or CBS had considered that site, but what could we do with that site? Negative? I think the problem with, with all the tourism is how do you deal with Route Twenty and how do you deal with the traffic issues? You know, that's difficult for citizens who want to just get around. How do you, how do you slow down that traffic a little bit to make it smoother and easier? As you attract more people into the town for the tourist activity, how do residents feel about that? And how do we deal with a way that balances the needs of the rest of the residents who live here all year long, right? So, I think that, I don't know if that's a negative, but it's, it's a challenge. And I like to think of negative things like that as a challenge for how do you improve the situation? So, it's an issue we have to deal with. It's an issue that can be dealt with. It's not an issue you're going to solve, you know, in five minutes. It's, it's a lot of money to, to do infrastructure projects like that, but it's doable. And we have to figure out where the priorities are and what we have to deal with first and set, as you say, you know, specific tasks that we have to do to accomplish the goal that we're trying to get to. You know, I, I think that really there, it's a collaborative effort too among a lot of people to, to make that work, just in, just as economic in general is. I mean, I want to make Old Sturbridge Village a partner, Public House a partner. I want to make these people to where they know they can call me and if we need to do something where it takes a couple of businesses to work together, I want them to know that I'm going to be willing to do that with them.
Thank you.
Mike?
This, this question involves engagement with the community. And you've already pretty much answered this question, because you went into great length about it. But I was, this one I got at lunchtime today at the senior center. And since I promised them I would ask the question, I'll have you repeat very briefly what, what your answer was. As a reference, our last town administrator visited the senior center on a regular basis. And this afternoon, I was told that another town administrator may have never entered the building. Please describe the extent to which you would or would not engage in issues and activities, and activities involving seniors. Would you be available to listen to their problems, answer questions and provide new information of interest to seniors on a regular basis?
So, I, I would say this, you know, Mary, I wish I could remember Mary's last name. In Hanson, Mary, I can't remember her last name, was the director of our senior center. And I was a regular there and, and, you know, she's probably the nicest person I've ever met. She's just one of those sweet people. She's a perfect senior center director. I used to spend a lot of time there. And if you ever called Mary, she would tell you that I was a regular there and that she's never seen another town administrator be there like I was. I would go and talk to residents. They had like an adult daycare as part of it too. And I used to go there and talk to people. They were somewhat mentally challenged. I would go in there just to say hi, hi and be friendly with those people. So, they felt comfortable there. I actually sat down a couple of times for half an hour or whatever and played poker with, there was five guys at a po, a little table. They used to play poker. I sat down with them, not really because I cared to play poker, but I wanted to chat with them and see what they were thinking about. So, I sat down with them for a little while and played. You know, being in the senior center resulted in the roofs getting fixed, the windows getting fixed, the new lighting put in. I mean, you know, you have to go out and see the needs. And, and the department heads will tell you what those needs are, but you have to see it firsthand. You can't just go from what some department head says to you. You really need to be engaged. If you would call Mary at that, at the Hanson Senior Center, she would answer that question that she still wishes I was there, because that's the way I am. I'm, I'm engaged. I particularly love dealing with seniors. You know, they've served all their life. They've worked hard. And often, I think the problem I always had with senior centers was not enough people to go to them. There's a lot of people like my mom when, when I was growing up and, and, you know, as I was older, she lived in a senior housing complex. And they were feet from each other's doors, but they never left their units. It was sad, because my mom was, got to be lonely when the kids were all working and doing stuff. She had nothing to do. And it was, it's important to create programs that attract people to the senior center, because people, they're scared to leave their, their, their housing. It's, it's strange, but people get, you know, they're comfortable at home, but they're lonely as can be. So, I think the senior center plays a vitally important role in people's lives. And how do you get people from those houses into the senior center is, I think, important.
Yeah. Just, just stay away from the pitch tables on Friday afternoon.
I'm pretty good at pitch. I can compete. I like pitch. Although, in fact, we used to call it setback, but yeah, I love pitch.
The police chief's here, Mike, you know.
In fact, the only way you can be invited to my home is if you play pitch, because Kim loves to play pitch. So, whenever, whenever somebody comes, the first question, "Hello, how are you? Do you play pitch?" She's kind of the next words of her mouth, so.
Yeah.
Okay. It is six o'clock and we had scheduled five to six. Mary, do you have a?
Very briefly. This is somewhat related to my other question, but I'm going to go a little further back. I know you mentioned that you're eager to return to a town meeting, form of government, town administrator. Your position's different in Southbridge.
Completely.
Yeah. So, looking at your resume, I noticed that Hanson is more similar to Sturbridge in terms of population, form of government, that type of thing. What, um, why did you leave Hanson for Southbridge?
So, let me be real clear. It wasn't by choice. So, let me explain that, because that sounds bad, but it's not. So, I loved Hanson and we were going to, that was my retirement. I wanted to stay there, because it's a very small community. It's very much like this. It's a very community-oriented. It's beautiful. And to this day, we go back and visit the chairman of the, the board of selectmen, well, he comes here too, but the chairman, vice chairman. You'll see in that letter of recommendation, Stephen Miko is the vice chairman, was the vice chairman when I was there of the board of selectmen. We had a phenomenal board of selectmen and I loved the community. We had lived on a street that was perfect. It was right on a lake and it was just, it was just beautiful. The board of selectmen supported, and I supported, a new school to be built. There was two elementary schools, one of which the state said it had to be closed. Another which was old, wasn't quite ready yet for closure, but it was, it was just old and worn out. The board of selectmen created a, a school building committee. And the concept was to close both those schools and build one new elementary school. And I supported the, I was, they, part of my job was to be on the building committee. So, I served on the building committee. The building committee completely one-hundred percent supported the building of the new school. The board of selectmen, all five members supported it. Eventually, one didn't support it, but they all supported the new school. And the finance board supported the new school. In other words, all of town government supported the new school. One small problem was a group of seniors, they were part of what I would call a tea party group, that were a hundred percent opposed to any new taxes for a school. And they went to war against the board of selectmen opposing the school. And they, well, two things happened. One is they did a phenomenal job in attacking the school. I mean, they, they just talked about it in terms of how much it would raise taxes and they just beat up. As you know, passing new schools are hard in their own right, because it is a tax increase. But they were just brutal and they, they, they went against the school and they end up winning. And the, the referendum against the school, it went down in flames in a big way. As you know, as a town administrator, you're loyal to the board of selectmen. That's my job, is to work for them and to carry on their policies. And in this case, I agreed with the policy. There was no differences. One of the members of the board of selectmen, matter of fact, is, is my recommendation, Stephen Miko, was recalled because he supported the new school. I've never seen anybody in history in my involvement in government that got recalled because they supported education, but he did. Another member lost the election as a result of supporting the new school. He had been a former teacher. And he was the chairman, Jim Egan, great guy, still visits me on a regular basis. We go back and forth. We're still friends. He lost the election because he supported the new school. And the third candidate that supported the school moved out of town. So, the board of selectmen changed dramatically and all three of the leaders of the taxpayer group took over control of the board of selectmen. So, I went from being a hero, I guess from their mind, to being a zero, because I supported a school system. And I will say it clearly today and I'll never forget it, that I did the right thing and I still think I did the right thing. I supported the board of selectmen that hired me. And I supported the school, because it was the right thing to do. That, when, when the group came in, they did everything they could to make my life miserable. And I decided that it was better to leave than to fight a war I couldn't win and to be engaging in. Listen, if a new board is elected, they have a right to do what they want to do. They're elected. And I saw that as not a good future and decided to, to leave. And then I was hired in, in Southbridge and here I am. But I have no regrets. And, and like I said, the, the chairman of the board at the time, Jim Egan, is not one of the recommendations I gave you. Could be, if I wanted it. Jim is, or, I'm sorry, Stephen Miko is. You can call Steve. He'll tell you the same story I told you. The staff, the, my chief administrative aide, Mary, would tell you that she loved me and she'd want me back. But it's just, the dynamics of the town changed. And that, and with that, I decided it was better for me not to be there. And that's the right thing to do. There's no point in staying someplace where the leaders of the town have a different attitude and, and see a different future for the town than I did. And I moved on. So, here I am today.
Okay. Thank you. We do have several of our department heads here. So, if you'd like to.
I'd be happy to.
And also, we won't be voting this evening. We have a meeting next week. So.
Okay. So, just one, I guess, the last comment, or I don't know if you have any more questions or? So, my last comment is that I'm looking forward, frankly, the nice thing about department heads here, and I know a number of them, because Southbridge and, and Sturbridge work together. Particularly, our public safety departments have been phenomenal working together on fires and stuff. So, Southbridge has been here and your guys have been in my department. They, they're just, I can't compliment enough of your public safety officials who we deal with on a regular basis. If I do come, I'm not looking to micromanage anybody. I'm going to support their efforts and, and work as a team like we do in Southbridge. So, I'm looking forward to that. And if you hire me, not only do you get a tremendous amount of experience, but you're going to have someone who's going to give every bit of themselves to this position. Because I plan on being here for next ten years and, and doing everything I can to, to make this an even better. this an even better town. And it's already great, so we can do a lot of great things together. Okay?
Okay, thank you.
Terrific. Thank you. Thank you, everybody.
Stretch. Stretch time.
You listen to him?
I listen to him all the time.
Oh, wait a minute.
I work the other end a little project.
Yeah.
I don't know how much you're charged.
Mary? Now, we certainly have your resume and everything, but the audience at home listening, they have nothing, so could you give us a short information, whatever you want to?
Okay.
Your history, your story, you know.
It could start anywhere. My history and my story. Let me see how far back I can go. From Rhode Island, no. My history and my story. So I am the town administrator in Mendon, Massachusetts, just down the road. Before that time, I was a manager for a town in Kansas, city in Kansas. Before that, I worked for Killingley, Connecticut, which is right over the border. Before that, I worked in Florida as a management intern, both for the city of Tamarack and for Broward County, Florida, which has a population of 1.6 million. Went to URI for both my undergrad and my masters. I became an ICMA credentialed manager five years ago now. This is the only profession I've ever done and chosen and have been doing it since I found out what it was in grad school. And so here I am. I've been on this path. How am I here in Sturbridge? I'm from Rhode Island. That part is very much true. I have owned a house in Connecticut for the last 10 years, so I am aware of this region as part of the last Green Valley. Worked and done economic projects in both before and when I was in Killingley. And now I am just down the road in Mendon. How's that for a quick?
That's good.
Synopsis for the folks at home.
Okay, now what we're doing is we're taking turns asking questions, okay? Priscilla?
First of all, welcome and good evening. Describe the approach that you would take to address the desires of members of the community that choose to keep it as, as it is, as well as those in the community who want to see new ideas, innovations, and businesses which may change the nature of the community but expand the tax base. What steps would you take to address all the needs effectively and in the best interests of the town?
These are long questions.
I can repeat it if you choose.
That's okay because I think the gist is the same challenge that we have in all Massachusetts towns, is it not? I mean, we are constantly trying to find ways to increase our tax base, but also keep the nature of the community intact and find a way to actually appease all the groups with different types of businesses and also repurposing areas that are, you know, of historic value and maintain that character, but also, you know, accommodating and quieting those fears of those who think that maybe it's happening too fast. What have we done? What have I done? You have to work with the community. You have to be an active participant in all of the boards and committees and groups, whether they are directly affiliated with the town or not, in order to get a sense of where the community is really headed. Now, that doesn't mean that everyone's going to be in agreement about every direction, but the only way, I think, to really get people to understand the value of these types of changes is to make sure you do, communicate as much as possible and through as many types of media as you possibly can. Town meetings or in the community, we have like coffee shop, like workshops, we do tangible events and just generally get the word out there all of the time, you know. I try to make sure it's not just me or just my board or any of the groups. It's also, we try to effectively communicate what the mission is or the whys through the staff so that when residents are coming in for their basic services, we can answer questions with facts, not just speculations about things, about why is this really happening and what does it really mean? And was that really true that this thing is going to get built over there on this historic land? Like, so that everyone knows, so that it's not, you know, more information, less drama, typically, is probably best. I don't know if that hit all your.
It does. Thank you.
Chase?
The most important part about Sturbridge is our great residents. How would you strive to develop relationships and would you have an open door policy?
I think that's, well, I think it's a given. Open door policy is kind of tricky, right? So yes, I mean, every, this is public service, what we do. So it's not really an option not to have an open door policy. We work for the people. We are available to them. That's what we're doing here. That's what we have to do. I think getting information to residents or knowing, like letting residents know what their value is, that's, that's our primary goal. That's, it really is the only focus. I mean, it is public service. And so I have a tendency to do better work, I think personally, when I'm engaged with more people. I just, I feed off sort of the energy of it. I like to get out and get, understand the people. I like, I like to be interactive. I'm not a person that makes decisions in a vacuum. I'm not good at that. I like to collaborate and build on an idea. Sometimes, you know, I'd say it happens organically, but honestly, that's, that's how it works for me, which is I could have five ideas on a piece of paper, but none of them really matter if you're not out there sort of generating information. And none of that matters if it doesn't actually meet the vision of the residents who want it in the first place. So it's a, it's a process, but yes, open door. Small towns in New England, it's a given. I mean, the only, I have a lot of foot traffic.
Lots of foot traffic. I guess, I guess it's my turn. This question is on the general subject of balancing goals and objectives. And as a preamble, I'll say that during 2018, the Board of Selectmen voted for Sturbridge to become a dementia-friendly community, a green community, and a complete streets community. The town also started a farmer's market and held the first annual Half Marathon, in addition to the nine goals and objectives selected by the Board of Selectmen last January with the participation of the town administrator at that time. So the question is, how would you document, execute, measure, and account for that many town goals and objectives at one time?
Man, that's a lot. Well, first of all, that's a lot of things to accomplish in one year. So that makes me think that there's a lot of collaboration happening here, which is excellent, I think, reflection of what you're doing. That's, that's a lot. It really is impressive. Well, green communities is probably pretty easy for me to say and also complete streets because I'm currently doing both of those things. We have green communities project. We actually have a coordinator now and I'm currently managing a complete streets grant that we just got for a streetscape project downtown in front. And so I'm used to the reporting requirements for both of those things. I keep track of those all of the time. Dementia-friendly community, sounds similar, sounds similar in the same. Maybe it's a grant-funded program that you got. I spent a lot of time at the senior center, so I'm familiar with the different types of programming and the training that's being involved there. So again, I have a great senior service center director. She's excellent, but I also keep all of the main files for all of her grants and programming within my own office. So I'm doing that already. Half marathon, okay. Well, sure, that sounds great. I need to train a little bit more, but I probably could do it.
We're not asking you to run.
If I have to, I mean, yeah, all right. I mean, I, I think I could do it. I just, I need a little time, sure. And then the, the goals and the objectives set, the nine, that stuff is, that's, that's very basic to the job. I've always had set goals and priorities. I've always done a good job of communicating that and keeping track of it for an annual report to the board. I like to do it, do it either through a weekly report that I write, that's sort of just general consensus that goes out to everyone, that's informational. Obviously, it doesn't have confidential information in it, but it has details of everything that's happening under a specific objective. And then I like to go back and update that over the course of the year. I do not like to be at the end of the year and then going back and thinking, oh, what did we do? So I usually am working on a novel and it's just constantly being updated. And I'm sending out drafts for you to, to edit. That's typically the process.
Nice, the serene tone.
Hopefully, there's no more sports. What else did I miss? Just those nine, the half marathon? Good. Did I get them all? All right.
Yeah, I think you did it. It is like, you know, juggling things, but you answered that you report back to the Board of Selectmen, which was the important thing that I wanted to hear.
Well, that is the job. I mean, you set the policy and I execute the things. I actually think I'm better on this side than I am. I'm better being the man behind the curtain than being in front of the curtain. I recognize that in myself. So I'm good at delivering on the things. And I like to have many things to do. So clearly, this place has a lot of those things, so we should be good.
We're good at that.
Yes. Wait to see what you're going to pick for next year. Triathlon.
Triathlon.
That came from a committee, not the Board of Selectmen.
I see a challenge there. I heard a challenge. Okay. Mary? Okay. So we all make mistakes that we wish we could take back in our professional life. Tell me about a time you wish you handled a situation differently with a colleague. That's part A. And then the flip side of the coin is, describe a few projects in your professional career, say in the past five years, that you are particularly proud of that you would like to share with us. Okay, that's two different questions in one. Okay, so. Well, one is kind of negative and the other one's trying to be positive. So I, I remember I answered this one before when we had our first round and I think my answer is still the same. You know, when I started doing this, I was very lucky to get hired as an assistant when I was very young and I had to manage a lot of people. And I can certainly tell you that I was not an excellent manager right out of the jump. There's no question. There are many conversations that I still play back in my mind with some of my department heads when I was 26 that I wish I could have handled differently. Or, or when I was, when I was handling HR, different ways that I would have advised the two people who were trying to work through it. I think of, I think back on those a lot. So I'm, I'd like to think I'm doing a much better job of that now. I've had a lot more years to get better at that part of the job, but I certainly have moments that I wish I could take back. Now, projects from the last five years that I'm particularly proud of. I like this one. Ooh, can we like, make it more specific? No. So let's, I'll start with Kansas. I really like to write grants and I like to find creative ways in order to find funding in order to do things for a community to help create that vision. When I was in Kansas, I helped them realize, visualize, and then get the funding for a trail system that we built in our town on land that hadn't been developed before. And that took three different types of funding, a private grant. It took trips to Topeka to advocate for funding and then actually fully executing. They'd never done anything of that scope in that town. And when I go back there, I love to run on that trail. It's very proud of it. It looks beautiful. We, we worked it in with the school, so they actually built a whole nature center on the side of it and they, so it was a wetlands piece. It just grew and it grew and it grew. It was such a very positive project. Since we've been, Mendon itself has been kind of a project. We've done a lot of great work. And I say that in the nicest possible way and I know there are people from Mendon who are very interested in this right now. They were without a manager for many years before I arrived. And they also had been without any sort of, they had, actually, I should take that back. They've had a couple of good managers go through for short stints of time, but then there was a gap in which no one was there. And sort of in that absence of leadership, these voids get created and projects and work get created. It's hard to sort of re-steer that ship. It was hard. It's been hard, but we still managed to, this past year, just finally get our funding passed for our new police station that's going to be built right on the town hall campus site using a combination of CPA funds so we can restore the fire station that's right next to us. I found funding for and moved part of our, part of our, this is a very beautiful town hall. Mendon is not this beautiful. The basement is a basement in traditional sense with carpet and, just the, I mean, this is a small project, but going into that building, residents would walk in through that main floor and it was pink walls and carpeting with mushrooms and it, just a terrible, very negative morale, like that, the sort of the thought was, well, if we fix it, then they'll think we have money, so we better not fix it because then we won't get money when we really need it. So one of the things I did is insist that we fix that problem. And so we got MPPH grants for historic funding. We redid the basement. We then moved part of the police station into the basement for, well, this project's, and then I moved offices that were there either back upstairs and redid their offices or moved them actually next door into the, the old Taft Library, which is another historic building. So I had to get additional historic funding for that. So now we have an inspectional services office in the bottom of the old library. And then Lou Library got built down the street. So it was kind of like, that's a lot of change for a town that hadn't seen a lot of change come through. Now, granted, it's just moving people and furniture, but getting buy-in on something like that early on is, was tricky. So we did that. We also did job descriptions, compensation studies, the basics of the basics. There had never been any type of HR ever. No filing systems, no things that keep me up at night. Nothing, nothing. So I have been finding creative ways over the last couple of years when either through turnover, you know, or attrition, when positions become vacant, taking a look at how many hours are actually required within the position and then seeing if there's any room there to potentially either consolidate or move that position to create some additional hours. And so last year, well, a year and a half now, I was able to create, find 18 hours for the first HR person we've ever had. I mean, 350 years, finally got an HR person. So I'm proud of that. You know, it's the small day-to-day things. We've done other big, large things. The police station is large. The library is large. Finding creative funding solutions for the police station, that's pretty big. That was pretty big. Even now, having to go and do another debt issue for, the overage of the cost of the police station is another creative financing puzzle, but those are the types of projects. So I like them all. Proud of all of them.
I don't know if you've dealt with this problem, but if you have, how did you deal with it? Or if it arises where you have a Board of Selectmen that don't get along, that are all five different points of view and no point of agreement, how would you handle that?
I've been lucky in Mendon, I'm sure they're saying, probably thinking something different, but I think that's true. Ever since I was hired in Mendon, I, we've had a very progressive, forward-thinking board. They were, sort of at a breaking point. So I've been lucky in the sense that this board has gotten along. They basically see eye to eye. There's not a lot of disagreement about primary focus of where the town's going. Now, I've worked in other places. I used to work in the town of Killingley and that's a nine-member town council in which they are put on the board by their political parties. That is very difficult. That is a very contentious environment to be in. How do you do it? You make sure your lines of communication are clear about who is communicating with who, right? So hopefully you have a clear line, the chair to who, to who. I'm open to having members of the board interact with staff. It doesn't bother me unless it's a specific directive that they've been told. Like, I'm not, I'm, more communication is better unless we're, we're giving out specific things to do. I have had to mediate in between members of the board and my office at times with the door closed and had everyone calm down. I've done that, hoping that's not the case here. done that, hoping that's not the case here. Are you trying to tell me something?
No, no, no.
No, not at all.
Far from it. Far from it.
And then, I will also say, in Kansas, it's a six-member board with a mayor, where they also certainly did not agree politically on much of anything. And they certainly were suspect of the girl from Boston. That's what they just assumed. Everything's Boston. So, that took a little, I mean, a couple of those, I never fully won over. Never, right? It seemed like everything was trying to do was sort of influence on some agenda from somewhere, you know? But, I've had some tricky boards. I'm not, it's part of the job, right?
Okay. And following up with that, how do you handle a select person that tends to think they have a little too much power as far as department heads and things go? We don't have that problem.
You're gonna scare her. Okay, search committee, help out here.
It happens everywhere. Happens every time. It does. Especially when you're in this transition periods and you don't have someone specifically in place, you know? And I get it. I like to think that everyone is, everyone's best interest is at heart, right? We all think that we're, we have to be there to help to do the thing because we're helping, right? They don't see the big picture of the thing. I usually, and have, I, I'm not really afraid to say things. So, I have had difficult conversations in my office with that exact member about why I think that behavior is detrimental to the organization as a whole. Not just, not because it bothers me and I don't like it, but because it affects the process that we have in place. And so, and it creates, you know, can create confusion within lines of communication with staff. It just, you know, if one staff member has a direct line to one person and they're getting different information than what we're trying to do as a whole, that's harder to unwind out of. So, usually, I will just have that conversation.
Not afraid to.
Yeah. It happens. And I mean, and I've never, I've been doing this for a while. I've worked with a lot of different boards. I've never had someone intentionally, on a board or otherwise, go out of their way to create a situation just for the sake of doing it. It's usually they're doing it because they think they're helping, they think they're accomplishing, I think. And that's where it comes from. So, I don't come from it as, from a point of what's happening. I try to figure out, what were you trying to accomplish? And let's figure out the right way we're supposed to do that within this structure that we've built.
Okay. Thank you. Priscilla?
First of all, to assure you, this board does get along. Well, we may disagree on an item, but it's always with respect to each other and never name-calling or that, this is not, you know, a sideshow. Trust me, it's not. Okay. So, I need to clarify that because I don't want you running away.
No, no, no. I, I've seen it all.
I'm sure, I'm sure you have. Okay. My second question is, what are the three top challenges facing municipal officials today? What actions would you take to ensure that Sturbridge is effectively prepared to face these challenges over the next five years?
Okay. So, the top two that come to mind, school funding formula is number one, right? That just is such a, such a, it's gonna take a lot of work with our representatives in order to make sure that they understand that we can't sustain these growing, love, this funding formula. Just is too much for us to bear within our tax limit. It just is. The second thing that I actually am more concerned about from a day-to-day level is actually staffing in the municipal level, particularly in the areas of finance or management or otherwise. There just aren't enough qualified people being brought into the profession as a whole. And it's going to create these voids in, that are really difficult to fill. And, most people don't see that because they don't do hiring for towns. But it's true. The last couple of times I've had to recruit anyone from anywhere, if it wasn't for like a chief position or something very specific, I've had to retrain a person from private industry into municipal life. And they're on their second career. And that could really be challenging if you're talking about a key position that's like a treasurer or an accountant. Or, I mean, there are nuances to municipal life that most people just do not understand. And so, I think that's gonna become more of an issue. As hard it is now to find managers, right? It's the cycle that's happening, because everyone's retiring. It's gonna trickle right down into the organization. And that's gonna be hard. And then, the other thing is, I think part of what we do here is becoming quickly outdated. Technology is really creating some opportunities for us to sort of rethink about how we provide service to residents. And that can be scary because we've done it a certain way for such a long time. But the fact is, if we can provide better customer service by going online and doing permitting there, or doing, finding other ways to reach people, residents will always come in. There will always be people coming in the building. But that number will drop and drop and drop. And so, we want to be able to make sure that we're targeting all of the demographic that's coming in now, right? They don't want to have to come in. They want to go online and they want to do the thing online. And they want to be done with it. So, I'm interested in all of those areas. I know they're not as flashy.
But they're, but they're real-life areas.
Yeah. I mean, that, I worry about that all the time. And I mean, this is a slightly larger community than Mendon. So, you probably have greater access to personnel and things. But I can tell you, in small towns, we can't compete really even with our neighbors when we're talking about trying to get talent for things. Because it just, we can't afford it. And it just isn't happening. So, it's tricky.
Thank you.
Was there a second part of that question? I didn't want to miss it.
Well, you addressed that. I just asked how you would, what you would do to ensure that Sturbridge was ready to meet it.
Well...
And you, you really answered it. So, I'm okay with that. Thank you.
Chase?
How important is economic development in a community to you? And could you give me an example of something you have done to help economic development in a town you've worked in?
Sure. It's incredibly important to me. I'm very interested in it. One of the things that I like about Sturbridge, and it feels kind of familiar, is that when I was in Killingley 10 years ago, we were just starting out then about rebranding ourselves and sort of creating greater visibility about what we wanted to be, sort of in the next generation of our lives, right? And so, we had taken a large site that was there, which was the Anchor Glass Site. And we, you know, it was decommissioned. And then, it was the Brownfield Site. And we had to work with the state to get it remediated. And then, we had to get it shovel-ready by investing the town's own money to get it ready, so that we could attract the big anchor stores who eventually came in. And now, when you drive down 395 today, it's a giant plaza there. That happened so fast. I mean, I mean, it didn't, it happened so fast relatively. It happened over a five-year span of time. And when you think about that, and the impact that it's going to have, and it's having over the like, the life of that town, that's incredible. You know, that's just an incredible amount. I, the first time I started working with developers and then the state for incentives and doing TIFs was when I was in Killingley. So, I worked with a power plant there, helped them renegotiate their TIF agreement. I also helped set up the expansion of the industrial park. We had a successful industrial park. We did the expansion piece on the other side. I would meet with developers. I go over agreements with council. We, we had a great economic development director, they still do. I just met with her last week to go over all of it again, because it's, it's amazing to think we'd be both back in the last Green Valley on the same sort of projects together. And that's very, this doesn't happen all the time. It's very exciting. But, we did so much work so fast then. But I can tell you, the main issue for that town was trying to figure out who they wanted to be next, right? That was it. Between logos and, you know, history and which buildings were gonna be redeveloped, and which areas of town were, which roads we were gonna redo, which intersections had to be redone. I've, I've always been interested in that piece of it. I'm also, I'm also a big fan of just rebranding for beautification purposes and walkability. So, like, streetscape projects, or beautifying areas, you know, facade improvements, things that just sort of enhance existing features of a town, that you might, you know, redoing parks in order to create greater visibility, redoing a layout of things. I like all of that. We're doing that in Mendon, too. I started the economic develop, started it last year, Economic Development Committee. I can tell you, I hand-recruited every person on that committee myself, all people who had not volunteered before for anything. I promised them that part of it would be going to every single restaurant in town, visiting every shop. And we've started to do that, you know, from donuts to blueberry wine. That was part of the pitch, say, you know, this is what it's about, you know? We have a very small commercial base because we have limited access to water and sewer. So, I have been part of agreements, talking about getting a Mass Works Grant in order to extend down 16. You guys are very lucky. You have much better visibility, traffic, access to many, many things. So, yes, is the answer. Economic development. Yeah, that's one of the reasons that I'm interested in this particular position.
Thank you.
Mike?
Okay. Mike, my question now is on the subject of complex, major project experience. And, and one example here is the Route 20 section of Main Street. It's a state highway. It's a US primary route. It's also a major evacuation route. And it has many issues, including congestion, lack of parking, utility conflicts, gaps in the sidewalks, no bicycle accommodations, and a narrow right-of-way. Five years ago, the town's commercial tourist district plan called for a project that would cost well over $20 million. Without, and that didn't address the congestion and right-of-way issues. So, the Regional Planning Agency is currently, CMRPC is regionally, is currently working on a corridor profile for this segment of Route 20. So, now, we come to my question. Please describe your experience with complex, major projects, and how you might guide the town to initiate this project with Mass DOT and develop it in synchron, in synchronization with available funding sources and funding schedules.
Okay. That's detailed. Again, I have two examples. I kind of just cited both of them. But I'll, I can talk about the 16 intersection in Mendon first. So, I'm currently working with Mass DOT about this intersection that we are redeveloping. Because the town owns a large parcel of land that is right to the top of that. This is where the water and sewer would also have to go in order for the community to grow. And it's also the number-one point of congestion, because we have traffic counts that exceed 10,000, you know, at 5:00 in the afternoon. And you can't get from 3 to, you know, it's after-school time. We are the main throughway between 495 and getting to some of those bedroom communities. So, we are full-on traffic. So, one of those intersections, I've been working with for the last year and a half specifically with Mass DOT. They've come out twice. They've done two studies. One on the intersection further below to see if we could change some of the turning there in order to incorporate some of the travel. Part of our issue, and I'm sure you probably have this here, is that there's not a lot of, there's not a lot of, not a lot of easements because of the, using, you know, horse and cart paths for original roads. So, it makes, you know, building these, expanding these roads a little bit tricky. We don't have, there's, just don't have the turning radius at that particular intersection. So, now, we are working with the front landowner and then possibly the portion that's the town in the back to sort of switch some of our, switch our conservation restriction, move the easement, bump out the intersection, and then do the grant, all at one time. So, yes, to that.
That's complex.
It is. But it's not as large. I should, I mean, it would, getting water and sewer is not as large as having to redo an entire intersection that is a main throughway. That is, that's a big project. But, staying in contact and having the right contacts and making those phone calls and having connections at these agencies makes the whole difference every time. I mean, I usually, I have, my technique usually is, make the phone call, then go to some meeting in which that person is at, and then introduce myself, so they can put name to face. And then, from there, you know, so over time, eventually, the return comes back on whatever it is. So, when I'm making that phone call, it's not just, this is so-and-so from wherever. It's, oh, hi, remember? Yes. And so, we've been very lucky. I mean, in a small place like Mendon, you have to use whatever you can to get attention. And we, I mean, we've had a lot of luck with earmarks and things because we have good relationships. But, I would also say, though, on the same scale, larger project-wise, was the entryway we did for Killingley Commons. That off of 395, that's a main, 101 is a state road that goes through there, connects to two town roads right there. We had to redo the whole intersection there in order to, there was a big debate for a while about doing a roundabout, which was, you know, very controversial, didn't get built. But, some, how many lights does it take to put, for one shopping center? You know, apparently, the answer is two. But that's, you know?
The, the town's commercial tourist district plan, the reason everybody was chuckling is because one of the proposals is to have a roundabout at the intersection of Route 131 and 20.
And nobody likes it?
I don't know. It's, it's controversial.
Six one, half thousand.
Everybody has an opinion, let's say.
Yeah, right. It seems like a big change, right? But they do seem to create some.
That's what, that's why, when you mentioned roundabout, you got a little chuckle here.
I didn't say anything about traffic calming measures. I didn't say that out loud. I know better. Mary?
I'm good.
Okay. If you were to get the position here, why and how would this job fulfill your career objectives in a way that your current position in Mendon does not? In other words, bottom line, why is it time for you to move on from Mendon and why Sturbridge?
Okay. Sorry, Mendon, if you're listening. So...
I, I know it's, it, it's hard to have an interview that is public access. But, you know, it goes with the job, right? With public service.
It does. And I mentioned this in the previous round of interviews, too. So, I'm not currently looking for a position. I have two and a half more years on my contract in Mendon. I'm very happy there. It's, I know the job pretty well. I've done it for almost five years now. It's pretty, it's pretty easy to do. I am looking for towns that I am interested in, with projects that I'm interested in. Because what I want to do is take the next 10 years, and that's, that's true. So, I, my children are small. They're both in school. I don't want to move them. So, I could move to Boston for other bigger, that's not what I'm looking to do. I live in Connecticut now. I live right over the border. I'd like to let both of my children graduate from the same school district they're in right now. I need 10 years to do that. So, am I going to spend 10 more years in Mendon, just signing things? And I could do that. I could do it. It's a lovely place. It's got a lot, we are, we have some projects. But, I would feel much more personally fulfilled by having projects and things that I'm excited about, again. I mean, it's, like I said, this, Sturbridge reminds me a lot of Killingley, except you have higher visibility and better things, restaurants, taxes. But, you do. And I'm, I remember what that was like. You know, it's been a while since I worked in a community, this, I mean, you're slightly, I'm killing is about 20,000, but like, slightly larger with some more complex things. So, I feel like, you know, I'd like to use all the parts of my brain, all the skill sets, you know? And this seems like a good opportunity for that. I mean, it, it really does. I mean, I think, so, and I said, it's true. I am not applying for jobs. I'm not looking at other jobs. You can ask Bernie. He knows. Now, he wants to know if I want. But, it's not. I, I really only applied for this because I'm interested in this. And it's, again, it's all about fit, you know? It's gotta work for both. But, I'm interested in what you're doing here. I'd like to be a part of what you're doing next. So...
Awesome.
Yeah.
Okay. How much experience have you had with collective bargaining in the different positions?
A lot. So, I was almost a labor attorney. So, I minored in labor relations. I actually thought, when I applied to law school, I was going to do that for a living. And then, luckily, I found this other direction. I have been the lead negotiator in all of my jobs for all of my union contracts. So, we have five collective bargaining groups now in Mendon. I've always had police, fire, highway, in all of the jobs. I should take that back. Not in Kansas. That's a right-to-work state. But, in Killingley, certainly, I was the assistant and the HR director. So, I've always been in charge of negotiating the contracts and doing the financial pieces that go along with it. So, this is the first time, I prefer to have town council, too, only because it's safer for everyone. But, this is the first time with Killingley that they had town council as well. And I insisted that they bring it in. And we've redone the contracts, essentially. We actually formed, formed the highway group since I've been there. And then, we successfully negotiated that contract before a couple of the others. I've been to the DLR. I've been to the JLMC. I've been to mediation. I've been to arbitration. In Massachusetts, I'm familiar with making that trip into Boston. We have some, you know, any sort of transition from any new type of administration is gonna create some bumps. And it certainly did initially when I got there. But, which resulted in us going on a lot of trips into Boston. But, we're in the middle right now, actually, of negotiating them all. We tried to get them all to succinctly line up. So, trying to get them done, so that I can get my FY20 numbers in. But, it's taking a little bit more time than I had anticipated. So, I also do, I also write the contracts for the department heads. Should put that in.
You run it by council, though?
Of course. Of course. But, I'm very comfortable in that area. You know, I, I'm happy to do most of the work, so that we move things along quicker. You know, I don't, I don't need to be delayed. I'll do the first draft or the second draft. Or, I'll make the amendments myself. I'll pull it up while we're sitting there and I'll do it. So, that way, we keep everything moving. No one wants to wait to see when they're gonna get, you know, their retro or, you know?
Okay. Thank you. Priscilla?
What are your personal core values? And how have these influenced your work ethic and how you approach your work responsibilities?
Oh, man. My personal core values. I'm not good at saying no. Set of values. I, I'd like to think that I have a strong moral compass. I think that that's true. And I say it, it sounds true. I have spent most of my life before doing this for a living... say it, it sounds true. I have spent most of my life before doing this for a living. My father was a mailman. My mother's a hairdresser. My sister and I are first generation to even go to school. I have been going to steak fries and road races and things at the library since before I knew what any of this was ever going to lead to. It's been part of my life. So, now I will tell you, I do this for a living, but I also volunteer, I coach both of my kids' soccer teams. I'm the president of their soccer league. I'm the den mother for my son's scout pack, and I'm on the PTO. I'd like to cut back, but I would. But if there's, I, I've always feel like if I can help, I feel like I've been very blessed. I've had a, it's true, great career, great life, easy hours, easy, like, I've been on, especially with Mendon. Mendon is a four-day work week. It's been a real blessing. So, I know how hard it is for other parents who can't get to the things. So, I try to do all the things if I can, you know. So, like, I can always bring the things in the middle of the day, or I could always, like, on a Friday or whatever. I try to be available because I get it. I, this has been, I've been very lucky. There's no question. So, so I do volunteer for a lot of things. So, I don't know if that's a core value, but it's just kind of what I've always done. I would also tell you, and if my father was here, he would say, not allowed to take sick days or not go to work. So, I've sort of raised from sort of that background, which is, why aren't you at work today? Or, why were you at the football game yesterday? You know you have to work tomorrow. So, that's always in there, too. So, that's, sometimes I think, one of the great things about municipal life is these jobs and the benefits and the structure and the positions. And there's such a great value to that. And I think, unless you're going into public safety, which people naturally think of for those things, but to find something when you're young and choose this as a career, it's, it's so incredible because it's, it's so structured and it's so reliable and it's, it provides you with all of the things you would ever hope for. I mean, the hours and the time, it just, it just does. And it's also good work. So, you know, core value. I don't know. Thank you. Think about it a little bit more.
What is your opinion of Sturbridge and what do you feel is our greatest strength and weakness?
What's my opinion of Sturbridge? I've always liked it. I'm from Rhode Island, so we don't know much outside of Rhode Island, right? So, I can tell you, but I do know of Sturbridge. I come here a couple times a year on field trips, as you can imagine, right? Your greatest asset has got to be your profile. People know where this is without even me having to explain where it is. When I say I'm in Mendon, I have to explain that in five different ways. No one has asked where Sturbridge is. They know where it is. So, one of the assets has got to be that. That's, I mean, it just, that is such a, it is. It's such a big deal for a town of this size. It really is, there's a value that you can't, you know, other towns would really be envious of. Now, I think one of the challenges has got to be, we were just talking about that with the traffic, but sort of the, what are you growing into now, right? What's next? Because I think there's a lot of opportunity here, much like the towns outside of Boston where they're doing these really creative, these microbrews, and they're doing all these, you know, they're taking these other, like, industrial sort of sites and turning them into other sorts of creative things. I think you have an opportunity here to do some of that creative stuff right here. And you have people that already know how to get here because we've been coming here for forever. And now you could have even more attractions that sort of keep this next generation coming in. So, how you do it, that's the fun part, right? Figuring all that out. But...
Mike, excuse me.
She mentioned microbrews. We already have three microbrews.
I heard, I heard. Was not aware.
And they're very, very good, too.
But they do bring in a lot of people.
They do.
People are very, we have the wine trail in there, me and Connecticut, and it brings in a lot of people.
Yeah. This, my question is regarding engagement with our community. And the specific example I got, got this at lunchtime today at the senior center. They asked me to ask this question. And as a reference, our last town administrator visited the senior center on a regular basis. And I've been told that another town administrator may have never entered the building. Okay? Please describe the extent to which you would or would not engage in issues and activities involving seniors. Would you be available to listen to their problems, answer questions, and provide new information of interest to seniors on a regular basis?
I, well, I mentioned that I go to the senior center. So, I usually serve, I'm trying to think, in addition to the events that I will go to there, that, like, the polka thing, the polka dinner, and they have these minstrels, these singing minstrels, I'll go to that. And then we do, I serve the volunteer lunch. I serve at the COA lunch meeting. I'm down there a lot in the kitchen with the apron on, serving the meals. I'd say, if it's not monthly, it's, it's probably close. I will also say that senior population has been very kind to me. So, they've been very nice to me and very welcoming. And so, one of the things that we did a couple of years ago is we, we've always had our, our holiday party there, sort of a potluck in the middle of the day for staff. But none of the boards and committees can go to that. So, we convinced the board last year to let us have an actual party off-site at Galliford's at the zoo. And I made sure that all of the seniors were welcome to come. This is a party open to friends of Mendon, so residents or friends of them. And they, so now they really like me. But we get so many who show up and they're excited. And we just, I got a beautiful thank you card just the other night from someone who got to go. And I just, they've been, yes, is the answer to that, which is, sometimes, you know, you need to get out of here, you know, you have to go out there. I would also say, I like to go to the library. That's another place I like to sort of go because I like to read a lot and mostly want to find out what's happening and what collections are coming in. Public Works, I'll go to. We're having storms. I usually, like, I'll pick up food and drop it off, you know, stop in. Police is right next door. I see them. We're in the same building. I see them constantly. Fire, we just got a brand-new chief, so I'm letting him set up his shop. Yeah, I mean, and then parks, I mean, we don't have a parks location, but we do have a beach. And so, sometimes in the summer, I will drive up and bring my kids to the beach, events at the beach at night. We have a cardboard boat race or things like that. I try to, I try to go to the things that aren't, like, political events. So, I'm not a huge fan of marching in the parade, not because I don't like parades, I love them, but because I'm not a politician, right? So, I don't mind being seen and I'm comfortable with visibility. I just, I feel like my role is something different. And so, happy to do it if that's something that's required. But I usually feel like I could be better served organizing the parade on the side, you know, and giving out the water or something. So, I try to engage with all residents.
So, you, you get out there and into the community and not just stay in your office?
Oh, yeah.
You're out there. That's, that's your...
Well, I think I might have mentioned, our town hall is not as nice as this. It's not really a challenge to want to stay in the building. We have done some beautiful things within reason. But, no, I mean, we, it's very easy to accept invitations to ice cream social at the senior center. That's a yes. Last Thursday, they were doing Train, Train Your Brain down there. And I was like, she's like, you have to pre-register. And I was like, I didn't fit the age demographic. I was like, come on. I was like, just let, I'm always trying to, you know, be involved in things.
You just have to watch out for the card games on Friday afternoon at the senior center.
I know better than to answer that. I'm...
Can you read? Okay. The last question, this is going to be somewhat related to Mike's, but, so you can answer a little differently or elaborate if you want. But obviously, we think Sturbridge is a special place because we've made it our home. What do you think makes Sturbridge special? And to what extent will you become immersed in our community beyond your job duties of... Well, I guess going to the senior center doesn't have to necessarily be a job duty, but how involved will you become in the community? And what about Sturbridge makes it special? You touched upon it a little bit, saying you like to get involved in our projects. But why do you think it's a special community when you really weren't looking for a job?
I, so, I get to come here for a couple of different reasons a year, right? Either through the Mass Managers Association, and we have our lunches here, or I've been to charity auctions at the public house. I've been to, coming here for a long time for different things. So, I recognize the historic value of the community. I'm sure that's, that's everyone's obvious answer, which it's a beautiful place. But that being said, I'm interested because it's got a little bit higher of a profile, which I'm interested in for a number of reasons. I think that makes the challenges a little bit more challenging, right? And the value, and the weight of the decisions a little bit more important because it's affecting a place that has a historic value that has to be maintained. So, it's, it's a, it's, it's got some nuances that I like. I have been coming here on and off, I don't know, since I was in elementary school. Every person, I assume, has been coming here on and off. I did not become familiar with all of the different locations and the venues for weddings and/or the trails or any of that until I started coming here with the MMA over the last couple of years. And since then, because it's centrally located, because since I'm in Connecticut and coming up here, and people are suggesting, why don't we go to Worcester? I've been saying, why don't we meet in Sturbridge? There's so many different places that we could eat that are in Sturbridge. So, I have just been coming here naturally. I don't know what to say. I mean, it just makes more sense to me for a number of reasons. But, I mean, nothing against Worcester. They're doing some great things there, too. But I just, all of that is exciting. And I want to work in a place where I want to say to my friends and colleagues, you should come there. We have this that's happening. It's amazing. And this is happening. And this is happening. And you've got to eat this. And you have to go to the store. I, I like to be proud, you know, of the place. I mean, I'm a part of what's happening there. And I want to, I really, I want to believe it. I can't, I like Mendon, too. I'll take it back. I feel, feels wrong to be, you know, saying that a community is great. Mendon is also great. However, Sturbridge has so many interesting things and such a lot of value. So, I really think collectively, I'm really interested, even if it's not me, I'm really going to watch and see how you transition the next couple of years. I think it's going to be really interesting to see if you, if you pull in a vibe, like, sort of what they're doing, sort of in, over near Boston, if that comes out this far, and then you, you make it more nuanced for here. I think you have a real opportunity to do something neat here. So.
Excuse me. Now, you mentioned the hours. I know you don't sound like an eight to 4:30 person because we do have lots of committees with meetings. And a lot of the committees, like input, are just the visible presence of a town administrator there. And we've had different town administrators. Some never went to an extra committee meeting. Some went sometimes in correspondence with the Board of Selectmen. We've had town administrators who give us the information Friday before. We've had one who, 24 hours a day, he'd be sending us information. So, I'm sure you realize that it's not an eight to 4:30 job, particularly being so busy with all your other...
Well, I, I am. So, the first year and a half on the job, for sure, I like to try to go to everything, even if it's the Business Association at 6:00 AM in the morning, or if it's, I mean, I can tell you, I've been to a town forest committee meeting at a person's house on a Friday. You know, I'm not bound by any sort of set of hours. I'm sort of just, I just do, right? And I understand, in coming into a new position, I'm going to have to make choices. And I, and if I didn't think that that was something that I was willing to do, I wouldn't be here. I would have made that choice already. I've been very lucky because my schedule's been so flexible in Mendon, and I've been able to do so many other things. Like I said, would like to volunteer less. So, I'm, I like, and I, it's important for me to establish those relationships. I like to be in those committees. I like to see who these people are. Volunteers are making up half of everything that we're doing here. It's so important. And they aren't available during the day because they're at their jobs. So, I get that. So, I'm not worried about that. Will I attend everything for forever? No. But in the beginning, very much so. It's, it's so important to make the connection with every person that's involved, who is volunteering for the town. It's got to be done. Just, I mean, when I was in Mendon, that's what I had to do there, too. I mean, you put the time in.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else have another question that we didn't get to?
No, we got three each, yes.
Yeah. Do you have any questions or comments?
Nope. No, I don't, I mean, I have, I just wrote down basic stuff that I wanted to remember to mention, but we really covered all of it. So, I'm not, I'm not overly concerned. I know you have a difficult decision to make. I hope you make the right one for you. Believe me, it's, it's important that you get the right fit. So, do that. And if you don't find the right fit, do it again. Just saying.
Well, that's happened.
Yeah. It's, it's important. It's important. So, I hope.
Well, we certainly appreciate you coming in and meeting you. And we're not voting tonight. We do have a meeting next Tuesday because Monday's the holiday. So...
That's fine.
Hopefully, then, there'll be a decision.
Be at work.
So, we do have a lot of the department heads here, if you'd like to...
Okay. Sure.
...greet them.
We should give them a microphone. See it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Who wants to go first?
Who wants to go first?
Yes, you know, it's going to be a poor connection. Just a bit limited up here.
I can't understand him.
Was it this choppy? No. Hmm.
I would like to proceed.
Well, there's always the idea that we could schedule a special meeting some morning when the connections don't seem to be as overloaded.
Jeff, how would you feel about doing another, scheduling a different time? Would you be able to do another...
That's at the pleasure of the board.
Okay. Would the board be able to do that over the next few days?
I would.
Well, I can't this week.
Yeah, okay, good. Thank you, because I can't either.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, what about Tuesday? I know we have a meeting Tuesday night, but what about Tuesday morning?
I can do Tuesday.
Okay. Chase?
Yeah.
Mike?
Yeah, I can make Tuesday.
Jeff, would you be available next Tuesday morning at 11 o'clock?
Seven.
Seven, your time?
And I do apologize.
Oh, it's not your fault.
Yeah, it is because I'm 300 miles away.
Well...
It doesn't even sound like him.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, I've got a cold, so. It's Tuesday. Yeah, I can do Tuesday morning, the 27th.
22nd. Right. At 11 o'clock? All right. 7 o'clock, your time?
Yeah.
All right. We'll give that a try. All right?
All right. I'm very sorry for...
No.
Oh, it's not your fault.
It's not your fault. It's the internet.
So, have we determined this four hours difference or five?
Is it four or five hours, Jeff?
Four.
Jeff?
Four hours.
Four hours.
Yeah, so 11 and 4.
So, 11 here would be 7 there. Does that work for you?
That's fine.
Okay. All right. Next.
Tuesday, the 22nd.
Tuesday, 22nd. Great. Thank you, Jeff.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so, we're going to have to make a motion to reconvene till Tuesday, the 22nd at 11:00 AM. Is there such a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I just have a question. If we do that, then we will, we won't appoint that night.
No, we, no.
Okay.
I, unless everybody's rearing to, but I firmly believe we need to take time to digest everything.
Yes.
And it wouldn't be given, Jeff. Is there such a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I just have a question, if we do that, then we will, we won't appoint that night.
No, we, no.
Okay.
I, unless everybody's rearing to, but I firmly believe we need to take time to digest everything, and it wouldn't be given Jeff twelve hours, just to go over his stuff, so...
But, we should also notify the other two...
Two. Would you do that?
Yeah.
That it'll be the, you know, when the, the decision will be held up, probably the first week of February?
Yeah.
Makes sense?
Yeah, because it's...
Because now you're at the twen, unless you do the twenty-eighth, a special meeting on the twenty-eighth, but we meet again on the fourth.
Uh-huh. It's the board's pleasure, do we want to get moving and do it the twenty-eighth, or, I mean...
If you make it like a one-item agenda.
Yeah, yeah, we could do that.
I don't have a problem with that.
Yeah. Jeanette, can you?
The twenty-eighth?
The twenty-eighth.
What time?
Well, what time?
I don't care.
I rate, I usual time, six-thirty, and it's only that on the agenda, okay? Discussion, possible vote.
That's not executive session, right?
No.
Okay.
Open.
I will let the other candidates know that it's been delayed until the twenty-eighth?
Yes.
Yes, because of technical difficulties.
I bet you've been wanting to say that for years.
For technical difficulties, huh?
They always have that on TV, yeah, they used to.
That's right.
In the old days. Okay, so, did somebody second the motion?
So, the twen, so it'll be Monday, the twenty-eighth, and the twenty-second is when we're going to meet, okay?
We'll tell you again. Jeanette will let you know.
It's a morning.
Yeah, I better not put it in here, because it could change.
If I can make the morning, anybody can make the morning. Right, Bill? You're not touching it.
So, we're going to be here at seven.
I'm retired. There was a warning.
I, I do have a conflict on the twenty-eighth, but you can do that without me, I'm sure.
Yeah, we can.
Well, I mean, not to say, you know, needed, but...
Thank you.
But if we have any questions, we'll ask before then.
You can ask before then, and the other is that I will be available by, by phone.
No Skype, you too.
Yeah, I could even Skype.
Okay, so, we have a motion in second.
It's still FaceTime.
Any more discussion on it, all in favor? Okay, five, ten, nothing.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, it's, hey, that happens when I try to turn the oven on to cook.
Twenty-second, so we are in, uh, recess, right?
No, we made a motion to...
Are we in recess? No.
Did we vote to adjourn?
We, we made a motion to reconvene, so...
Reconvene on the twenty-second.
We don't need a motion to adjourn.
Adjourn.
No, we're dead, we're just re, we're just reconvening.
We're going to reconvene on the twenty-second, then.
Seven o'clock.
Mary, are you still in session?
No.
You can come up, no, we're done.
Yeah. No, we voted to reconvene, so, thank you.